All right, good evening. This is the November 20th, 2019 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Almost official.
Almost.
Should be dragging on a little longer. All right, next is number four, is Open Forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and we do have one gentleman that did sign up, and he is responding or wants to comment on an item that's on consent this evening. So what we'll do is, when we do the consent, we'll have, Mr. Coiman will have you speak at that time, since it's on the agenda. So, I didn't see anybody else sign up. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak during open forum but did not sign up? All right, saying none, I'll go ahead and close. Open Forum, we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. All those in favor, second if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is number six, which is Presentations. We have three presentations this evening, but the first one is an important one. We have the order of, first order of business for the oath of office for newly-elected Council Member Justin Olson. So if you would all meet me down in front, and I've got the mic.
(inaudible)
My voice for Jets.
(inaudible)
John can add a confirmative.
I was gonna say, you don't wanna touch that, are you? He's just gonna see if they got, I think it's a bad start.
You don't have the one that goes out of here anymore?
What's that?
Do we have the one up here that's giving?
That's the one I have.
Okay.
That's what I brought.
Okay.
(inaudible)
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 A progress towards that growth as we work towards potentially maybe hiring here down, down the road soon. So I just wanted to say thank you and make sure the public was aware of how hard they work to, to do right with our dollars and to prepare for that growth. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for the info. And then Councilmember Dennis, you were pulling K, which was response to request for information. Now, did you want to comment before we have Mr.?
I would like to comment on it, Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
So as a matter of process and procedure, this, pulling this item provides the opportunity for Mr. Coiman to come up and speak. And for those of us that are here, Mr. Coiman has become a fixture here as of the last six or seven meetings or so. Kind of the concern that he had started over a project that was on some adjacent land, a development. And even though Mr. Coiman doesn't own that land or have any legal call to that land, he's continued to have questions and concerns over that. And so there have been a number of letters that he, or questions that he has submitted to council and staff. And we have continued to work in good faith to provide him information to address those questions. So he's here again tonight, this time in response to a letter from our city attorney that handled an information request from him. So.
Yeah. And Mr. Coiman, if you want to come on up, we'll let you ask or comment. Just so the public is aware, what generally happens anytime anybody speaks during open forum, whatever that response that's given to the person that, no matter what it is, actually, we get a copy of whatever that response is, and then we accept the response as part of our consent. So since Mr. Coiman had asked during open forum to speak on this item, normally what we do is we just pass through on consent, but we're pulling this one so we give Mr. Coiman a chance to speak. So just again, state your name and address for the record.
John Coiman, 6749 Geneva Avenue in Cottage Grove. And Mayor City Council, thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Yes.
And just one more part on the background. If you take into account my Newport neighbors and, you know, our, our property up there, most of them on the 2040 comp plan are, are kind of an eggshell color, which is rural residential. This would be the only property in all Cottage Grove, the Passavod's re-designated property, where a medium-density designated property is right next to a rural residential lot. And again, you gotta, you have to take into account the Newport folks, but, you know, that's a little background there. So I, I gotta tell you how disappointed I am in the, the response from the city. You know, I had asked kind of firsthand questions. Who, who had knowledge of this stuff? I get back the answer, city staff. It, it doesn't help me at all. I, I think I, like you said, I've been here four or five times now. And, and I'm, I, I could have told you city staff four meetings ago. So, so just to recap the letter, during the Oltman School Project, the Passavod's verbally mentioned their desire to city staff to develop their parcel in the future. But we don't know who city staff is. We also don't know when that took place or where that occurred. The anonymous city staff member noted the Passavod's request, but did not document it. Later, the intent of the Passavod's request was remembered by somebody on the city staff. We don't know. And is then from that on, that point on, adopted as the city's own initiative, even though there is no documentation to that effect. The letter mentions this modification of the 2040 comprehensive plan, then wove its way into the process. The letter mentions transparency, I would say invisibility. The city seems to not care about anything on the who or why of the initial change, just after the fact that they followed all the notifications correctly. So I'll read to you the definition of "the end justifies the means." It is used to say that a desired result is so good or important that any method, even a morally bad one, may be used to achieve it. Since nobody has any specifics on how the Passavod parcel was adjusted, I'll give you my rendition of what I think happened on the Passavod's medium-density parcel designation. Passavod start out with a 17-acre rectangle-shaped parcel. If that was left alone, the new 66th Street would have been a straight east-west shot and would meet up perfectly with rookage. But that configuration would not allow enough room for the softball fields the city had slated for the $2 million gift park received from District 833 via the Oltman School referendum money. So the city and the Passavod's have to make a deal. The city gets 2.6 acres of land from the Passavod's to let the city build future softball fields. 66th Street gets a jogged in the north, and the Passavod's get a medium-density designation to make the best future profit from their parcel. Sure guess on my part, and I have no evidence that what took place. Of course, you can't dispute me because nobody has any specifics from the city's side. Now, before you jump all over me and indicate city staff would never, ever do anything unethical like that, I'll give you two examples where the city acted a little bit on the shady side. You be the judge. 2014, we received a letter from the city Cottage Grove indicating the ravine running through our property had become a public nuisance. The city offered three options to rectify that. I could fix it myself, I could do nothing, and the city would fix it for me and charge me back, or I could call city staff for an alternative. I went with option three. During that call, it was indicated to me that all I had to do to make this whole thing go away was to sign a piece of paper to allow stormwater pipes to be run through our property by the city. None of my neighbors whose property also touches that ravine received threatening letters, just us. Would you call this extortion, harassment? In this situation, we had to hire an attorney, and several hundred dollars later, we no longer had a public nuisance on our hands. And believe it or not, nobody had to make a single change to the ravine. If you doubt what I'm saying, the city and city attorney should have copies of that correspondence for you to review. If they don't, I can provide that. Situation number two, April 2016. We got a call from the city Cottage Grove to come to City Hall to discuss our driveway. Unknown to me, the driveway meanders around a bit, and in spots, it was discovered to be a few feet on the now school district's property. As it hadn't been that way for close to 20 years, I was not interested in making any changes. After considerable discussion that was going nowhere, the Cottage Grove city staff member mentioned that they had heard I had always wanted my gravel driveway paved. And just to be clear, a paved driveway is definitely on my if I won a million dollars list. The conversation eventually turned into an offer being made by Cottage Grove city staff to pave our driveway free of charge. We're talking probably $40, $50,000 worth of driveway work, all free to me. All I had to do was sign a piece of paper to allow stormwater pipes to be run through our property by the city. What would you call this? Quid pro quo? In this situation, our morals got the better of us, and we declined this very generous offer made by city staff. If you don't believe me, stop by, take a look. We still have a gravel driveway. I do have an audio recording of this meeting. If you're interested in listening to it, let me know, and I'll get you a copy. You'll be able to confirm what I'm saying is 100% true. I would bet the end justifies the means applied to the Passavod's property designation as well. To say the initial process leading up to the Passavod's property designation as medium-density was arrived at in a transparent manner is laughable. I'll end up getting together with my neighborhood group and see what we will do going forward, but we'll see how it goes. And thanks for giving me the time to speak.
Okay. Councilmember Dennis, did you?
Yeah, I do. John, could you please stay up here?
Sure.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I've been trying to understand what exactly it is that you're trying to accomplish here. Now, you've, you've had a chance to speak. Now I want to say a few words. I'm starting to feel like you're here for another purpose. And I can't really identify that because what continues to happen is instead of dealing with matters of fact, you continue to bring assertions forward. Another one here made by your own words tonight on how you believe things have come down. Now, you might recall a couple meetings ago that I actually challenged you because you had made an assertion that some inappropriate action had happened, that somebody, either a member of city staff or city council, or maybe commissions that are, that are taxpayers that volunteer to the city, that someone was somehow benefiting financially from this. And when I asked you to explain that to everybody, including the folks at home that are watching this, you admitted, well, you know, I, I guess I kind of made this up, but it came out of my own mind because this is what I thought happened. Well, we deal with findings of fact. We deal with legitimate causes and concerns. And what's happening here is everyone has been very open, honest, transparent, and dealt in good faith with you through this entire process, whether it be our city staff or our council. Now, you've made issues relative to why did the council not get back to you and have a conversation? So let me make this be very clear so it's understandable. And I think it's going to make sense to a lot of folks that are here and watching at home. Mayor Bailey, as mayor of the city council, he is like the chairperson of our board. And he reached out to you and had an in-depth conversation, which you identified here, and shared your appreciation that he did that. I responded to you with an email, which you criticized by saying it didn't answer your concerns. But what I told you is that my job and every person's job here at this table is to ensure that we keep an open mind, and we take in all the testimony and facts before we make a final judgment on something. So obviously, that wasn't good enough because you brought that up a couple times. You also took excerpts of meeting minutes, and you went after Councilmember Thede and myself. And you used those, those words in a way to try to support your narrative. And that was an unfair and inappropriate thing to do. And, and we dealt with that matter, too. So we're at a point now where I'm starting to feel that you are badgering our staff, and you are really being, you know, a little bit problematic here for the council because of the assertions that you're making. Instead of looking at scenarios and saying, you know, we can deal in good faith and work through and treat people fairly, you continue to take us down another path. And this is really disappointing. And when you make those statements, what you need to understand is that your words have power. And what you can do is you can cause people to listen to those words and come away with a different conclusion from what reality is. And that's really a very, very disappointing thing. So I don't know at this point in time what more I can do for you, or what our staff can do for you. We've even gone to the point now of having the city attorney respond to you and map everything out. There are no collusions. There is nothing being done under the table. There is no conspiracy theories that are happening here at all. And I want to be crystal clear with you on that for that understanding. Anything that you're coming up with is something that you're creating out of your own thoughts. The issue with your driveway being paved, that was a school district that paved your driveway, not the city of Cottage Grove. And I'm surprised that as the property owner of your property, that you don't remember that that's where that paving came from. But yet you tried to throw the city back under the bus. The last thing I want to say is that you brought up about the residents of the city of Newport. This is the city of Cottage Grove. We are 55016. We listen to and work on behalf of the entirety of our constituents here in 55016. Now, we try to be respectful, considerate, and decent to work with, with our partnering cities, especially when we do projects and developments and things like that. I got to be very honest with you. It's an open meeting. People can and have come in, and they've exhibited their viewpoints. But the fact of the matter is, the voices really don't carry anything here because they are not residents of our community. They don't own property. They don't pay a tax. They're not legal residents of the area here. So when we look at the big, big picture of everything, we have to take into account that we have well over 13,000 homes, over 37,000 people in this city that we have to work on behalf of. And so I understand there are folks that don't want to see development or other things come in. But I'll tell you what, that growth and opportunity and tax base and all the good things that, that that provides to the community as a whole, a lot of people find benefit and value in that. So I'm sorry that we can't make you happy. I wish that we could. Please look at me. I really wish that we could. But continuing to come in here and bring these points up and be representing things which are not factual, that is really starting to get disturbing, and nobody here deserves that. And you certainly don't deserve to put that onto your name in front of the community either. So I would have you think about that. And that's what I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, could I respond a little bit here?
Uh, sure.
So just on the, on the driveway thing, when the city staff member made the offer to me, there was no indicator of who behind the scenes was going to be paying for this, if it was the school or the city. So how I would know it was the school, maybe I could have surmised that. Why is this a, a big deal for me? I think this is going to hurt my property values. I absolutely do. So it's all rural residential up there. This is, this would definitely be out of place for our area. So that's, that's my agenda, is to not have it happen, keep my property values up, and, and go about my business. So again, the, the reason I brought up the questions is, it seems like the, the city is very vague on the background of how this property got changed. Who, who talked to the Passavod's? We have, I got city staff. I don't get a city staff person's name. When you say conflict interest, again, I, I don't know who's talking to who or, or who the Passavod's contacted. I, I can't say. And, and can you? You know, that it's, when, when something is completely undocumented, it's somebody's verbal wish that makes its way all the way to the comprehensive plan. I have no idea what's going on there. There, there's, there could be anybody doing anything. So I'm.
Well, John, again, that is property that you do not own.
Absolutely.
You do not have the right or the ability or the, the authority to tell that individual what they can or cannot do with their land.
Right.
Okay. Now, if you were to come forward at some point in time, let's say you had a parcel that you wanted to sell, wouldn't you appreciate the fact that we'd work with you to ensure that things happened? You, you know you would. You know you would. And so what it comes down to is that you have a concern, that you're looking out for yourself, thinking that this is going to diminish your property value. I've been back there. I was back there again here within the last week, looking at things with a critical and thoughtful, respectful eye. And I don't believe that's going to diminish anyone's property value. I really don't. So what we'll do is we'll have to wait and see how history plays out. History will record something, as I like to say. The truth of the matter is, it will be fine. And I wish I could give you the confidence to walk away and have a decent feeling about that. Nobody here, John, wants to hurt you or any other neighbor or resident of the area, not at all. And I, I just wish we could make you understand that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. All right. And then the third item, which was pulled by, off of consent, was pulled by myself. And that was a comment letter regarding Washington County draft 2020 to 2024 CIP. And there was, most of the information in the request or our comments as it relates to the, the county CUP, or CIP, excuse me, is great. The only two things I wanted to bring up as a specific comment, one was we, we as the city of Cottage Grove are asking the county to move up the Gray Cloud Island transitional planning process for the, the parks. And I believe it was originally in 2023, or is in 2023, we're asking Washington County to move it up to 2020. Purpose being is that we do see, we're talking about development. We do see there's some development or some possible landowners on the island that are interested in, in developing. Whereas right now, there is a plan with the Met Council to have the entire island be a park, which, going back to 1994, the city of Cottage Grove and Gray Cloud Island Township, actually, too, and the majority of the landowners down there do not want the entire island to be a park. We want it, a portion of the island to be a park. So there's a process we have to follow with the Met Council because they're not happy with it. And we're not happy with the responses we're getting from the Met Council. So with that being said, we're asking the county, who is the lead authority on this, to, to move up the study, to work with the city of Cottage Grove, to update the planning for that particular island. So that's one. And then the other item, too, and I do see our, our county commissioner is actually in the, in the audience. Very excited to see the plans for the new pavilion and the upgrades that are going to be happening on what I guess you would call the lower landing of the Cottage Grove Ravine Park. And I do know that staff is just asking a question regarding the upper landing as it relates to some of the projects and the, the equipment and things that we're going to go on the upper part of the entrance getting into the park from County Road 19. And it doesn't appear at the moment that that is in the CIP anymore for some reason. You want, yeah, yeah, if you would like, Mr. Johnson.
Wayne Johnson, 7862 62nd Street South Cottage Grove, county commissioner. That is not on the particular item on the CIP right now, but it is on the radar to be done. We're doing the park as we find the funds to do it. So it is something that is definitely in the, in the plans and the desire to do it. It says right now, we're taking care of the lower pavilion as a priority issue and get that taken care of. And then the next part, we'll be doing that. And that'll be in the next, probably would be in the next CIP, but it would be in the next few years. So it is definitely something that I bring up on a regular basis because I asked about that. There just wasn't enough money in the funds for this time. So I just want to let you know if, even though it's not in there, it is in the plans to do it.
Okay.
Because that's what everybody wants to have done. So.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So anyway, that was the two items that I did want to bring up as a, there's other things that we're talking about with the county, but this is typical. Matter of fact, later this evening, we will have a presentation on our CIP and some of the process that we're going to be going through over the next few years, too. So this is the opportunity that the councils of all the various cities get, in the county, get an opportunity to speak on the CIPs for the counties. So that's why this is on our agenda this evening. So that was it for that, unless anybody, did you have anything else you want to add? All right. So since nothing else was pulled on consent for discussion, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Mills, second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you are here for anything on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Eight on our agenda is approved disbursements. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. There are none this evening. Bit of words, there are none this evening. Eleven is our regular agenda. We do have three items. The first one is Calarosa East zoning amendment and preliminary plat. And Mr. Burbank, you are taking us through this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the applications that I'll be presenting this evening are related to Calarosa East. You may have heard that name before. We'll talk a little bit about that. Lanar Holmes is the applicant. Paul Tabone, their representative, is here this evening. And it is a preliminary plat and a zoning amendment proposing a 175-unit residential subdivision in the east ravine portion of the neighborhood. The east ravine was a master plan that was completed. It's about 4,000 acres in the eastern portion of Cottage Grove. We're seeing a lot of the new development in that area. And this, this is just a continuation of that. But again, it was adopted in 2006, and here we are, 2019, almost 2020. And it just is a testament to good planning, as we're seeing good results in that, in that neighborhood. The location is north of the new ravine parkway. It's to the west of Inwood Avenue, to the south of Woodbury, and north of 70th Street. It's a continuation, actually the last phase of the Calarosa subdivision. There was subdivisions one through four. And then the area in yellow that you see is the area that's being proposed this evening. The actual application request, again, is for a zoning amendment to rezone 58.56 acres of land from AG1 agricultural preservation to R3, single-family residential with a PUD or planned unit development. The second request is for a preliminary plat to be called Calarosa East to create a residential subdivision consisting of 121 detached single-family homes, 54 townhome units, and 13 outlots. So looking at the area that's being platted, the area that are identified in yellow are the single-family lots. And with that area, it's just standard platted lots. They range in size with the average lot width being 72 feet as measured at that front yard setback line of each of the lots. Also, the port, the project includes a medium-density townhome attached unit project. But even though it has some attached type units, the overall density of the project is still only 3.16 acres. Again, 58.56 acres with all the different single-family and multifamily units proposed. So from the original Bothy concept plan, the Bothys were the, the farmers of the property that owned it previously. And back in, I think, the first concept we saw was 2014, then a revised one in 2017, and the subsequent plating. So down in that southeast corner of the project, it was identified in that concept plan as single-family residential with a, a lane cul-de-sac street. And with this current proposal, the 54 units of medium-density attached style housing product is proposed in that area, south of the ravine parkway, which will be constructed as a part of this project. So one of the questions that was raised at the planning commission meeting is the amount of open space around these medium-density units. And they're actually almost 10, 10 times the required amount of open space. When you look at all the outlots and common areas for the HOA, they're at about 3,600 square feet of open space per unit. So the concern about that, staff did look into, and, and were not addressed, a concern. The, the units that's being proposed be a variety of different colors, similar to the Calarosa West townhomes that we talked about a while back. And so just a, a continuation of a different style housing product for residents looking to move to or move around in Cottage Grove. For the land use and zoning, it is guided for low-density residential. The density within that land use is one to four units per acre. Again, I had stated its total of 3.16 units per acre, and there are no land use changes proposed as a part of this project. It is consistent with the 2030 and the 2040 comprehensive plans. And the zoning change from AG1 to R3 with a PUD is consistent, is consistent to how a lot of our areas within the, within the east ravine neighborhood are continued. It's just that succession of development as they, as they go from farm fields to homes. With the development standards found in your staff report, you'll find a comparison of the standard R3 zoning, and then the flexibilities that were allowed through that planned unit development. Again, the multifamily architecture, here's an example of that. The applicant has indicated that the home styles that they're building in the western portion, the subdivisions one through four, they're looking to continue to carry that product into this subdivision, as well as adding some new single-family architecture styles, models. And I'll let the applicant talk further about that. If you have questions, again, a variety of different home styles for peoples, people to choose from as they find their specific lots that interest them within the community and neighborhood. One of the things I wanted to point out is, as a part of that east ravine master plan, one of the key focal points was this line here. It's the ravine parkway. You, you come in on it, the, one of the first phases that was constructed is you come to City Hall. That was really a, a key, kind of the backbone of the development that was set up through that planning process. And what's kind of exciting for this project is it's an additional segment of that phase. We had the 2018 and the 2019 components constructed between Keats and, and Jamaica Avenue, and then from Hinton Avenue over to Ensdale. And so as these developments occur per the east ravine plan, we're getting those segments of the parkway put in. And so again, it's, I find it interesting and exciting that we are having that opportunity to continue that vision that the city established also many years ago. Looking at the access and right-of-way within the single-family portions of the road, the areas you see in tan there, that would be our standard roadway design. The area of green would be the ravine parkway, and that will be a joint construction project between the city and the applicant as that gets installed, and the right-of-way is dedicated through the plating process. The areas in orange are the private roadways. And if we look here, you'll see that the through roadways accessing the site are 30 feet in width, and the cross alleys, streets would be 22 feet in width. They do have onsite parking provided on the driveways. They have some onsite parking spots off to the side hammerheads. And then there's parking stalls provided along the sides of, of those wider streets. As a part of the recommendation from the technical advisory committee of the city, we are requiring a fire access lane or trailway along Inwood Avenue and that private drive. we are requiring a fire access lane or trailway along Inwood Avenue and that private drive. One component of this that you don't see quite often with subdivisions is the vacation of public right-of-way. As a part of the whole east ravine master plan, as a part of the ravine parkway design, sixty-fifth street between Inwood Avenue and the new parkway is going to go away. So with that, what we've identified in, in your memorandum is two phases of vacation for that public right-of-way. There's a portion of identified in yellow here, that's thirty, thirty-three feet. That would be, excuse me, vacated is a separate process from this, and it incorporated into the final plat when it's brought before the city. For the southern portion of that, that's a little wider, that's fifty feet, and that is the area per state statute. When that's vacated, that goes to the adjacent landowners. Well, in this case, there's multiple landowners along that area of the public right-of-way. And what the city staff has proposed is that through this process, there's a phase two dedicate, uh, public right-of-way vacation, most likely will occur at the same time as the other one, but we'll treat them as separate because one involves the plat and the other one doesn't. And with that, for those lots that abut sixty-fifth street as it currently exists, we'd propose to create outlots that would be dedicated to those homeowners, the same width as their lots that abut that current right-of-way. That's the areas in green and brown, and, uh, we've talked about that, and it'll be highlighted and detailed in the development agreement as that's brought before you. Again, for the plat, the areas that are in public right-of-way now would be dedicated as outlots, and those would be under the control, maintenance of the homeowners association. Trails and sidewalks, sidewalks, one side of the road per standard, uh, design in the single-family portion, there's a continuation of the trail corridor that comes along here. It's in yellow right now, and that would continue down to the parkway, providing another crucial link to our trailway network within the community. As a part of the ravine parkway construction, there would be continuation of existing trailways and sidewalks along that public right-of-way, and that we are proposing or recommending a couple additional sidewalks per that project. Again, I mentioned the fire access lane, and that, uh, would be installed as a part of the construction project as well. Surface water management standard to any type of development that comes before the city, creating ponds that meet state requirements and watershed disrequirements, and the city does that coordination of efforts through the review of the grading and review of the, uh, stormwater designs. The grading of the site would create walkout lots, rambler lots, and a variety of different, you know, basement options for, uh, people looking to establish a new home in this neighborhood. In ter, in terms of, excuse me. In terms of parks and open space, one of the things we completed after the east ravine was a, a park master plan for that first neighborhood to develop. You'll see is different circles in there, and what, what those point to is, is different future service areas, neighborhood parks, trailheads, things like that, that are points of interest and need to be taken in consideration for development. The, uh, new Glacial Valley Community Park is over by Keats Avenue, and then there are two crossing search area segments. And when we talked with the technical review committee, we basically identified that it's probably most appropriate and wise to shift this identified circle to the east as this property develops, next to the Dodge Nature Center Shepherd Farm property that has the conservation easement with the Minnesota Land Trust. So we'll be looking to refine that vision and design as we, as we proceed and as that property to the east develops. But, so through this project, we would be requiring cash dedication, uh, through the final plat process. Landscaping, the single-family lots would have standard boulevard and yard trees, plus additional four trees and ten shrubs that are required. You'd see, uh, screening along that former sixty-fifth street right-of-way area, and in addition to the rot landscaping that's put in with the ravine parkway, there would be landscaping along the common areas of the, of the plat. So with that, uh, we're excited to recommend that the council take the following actions, and as is listed before you.
All right. All right, thank you, John. Comments, council? Yep, I'll start with Councilmember Thede.
So just to, to make sure, you know, again, this is, turns out that these are our town homes right, right next to single-family homes, which supposedly we didn't have any in town. But, uh, um, at any rate, there was a, a neighborhood meeting that was held by the builder, right? And I think at the planning commission, I, I did take a look at that, there was, there was a, some comment there. What, can you summarize the comment or the meeting?
I did see, uh, one of the people that did comment at the planning commission meeting on this here, um, the things that I recall hearing were the density around the attached top, you, residential units, and that's why we looked into that. Uh, there was infrastructure questions related to where all the water's going, where the pipes are coming from, and that's all handled by our city engineer, public works director. I would, uh, have them answer any of those specific technical questions that may arise. But, uh, a lot of the standard development things that we answer through the development process, we're taking care of and addressed through this proposal and will be looked at further when we get final construction plans.
So how many, how many people were at the neighborhood meeting?
Um, I think that there were maybe two or three.
Okay.
I actually think only two, and one of them was from Woodbury. So that was the person that was doing most of the talking, and I was not aware of all the changes that were made there. So, um, I wasn't that many, and then I also went to the planning commission, and yes, I made some comments, and yes, I still have some concerns, and this is the last place I want to be. It's the last place I want to be.
All right, so how about if we?
Not my, not my shit at all.
How about if we do?
I feel like I have to. I, it's not that I want to, I feel like I have to. I cannot not say something.
No, so what we'll do?
Just one, one other comment then?
But wait one second, just, what we'll do, what we'll do is, I mean, it's not a public hearing, obviously that was done at the planning commission, but I always give the opportunity of anybody that wants to bring up a question or a comment is welcome to do so, because we want to hear too. I mean, we could see the notes and things from the planning commission, but, and they're in the packet, uh, but we'll give you a chance to speak to us tonight if you would like to, okay? All right, sounds good.
I'm fine, I have.
No, you're fine. Perfect. Now, Councilmember Thede.
So just a, as a comment on, um, so, and you live kind of around the corner on Enskip, but, but was there anybody that was on sixty-six whose backyard actually borders it at any of the meetings?
I have not received any communications from those residents.
Also, one, one comment in terms of, um, ideal, and it's gonna actually ultimately just go to the ravine parkway, and then actually ideal is gonna be vacated north of ravine parkway?
Inwood Avenue, which comes off of Seventieth Street, past the water tower, also known as Sunny Hill Drive as you go further into Woodbury, uh, that will be, uh, improved as a part of this project because of the access, because of the additional traffic generated from the new development and the subsequent, or the previous phases. The area north of the ravine parkway, it's been discussed with staff and also at the concept plan level, that that would be vacated and incorporated into any additional plating to the north of the parkway, similar to how Ideal Avenue near, near Sunny Hill Park was vacated and rerouted.
Okay.
And that's what would be anticipated here.
All right. Okay, that was it?
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. John, thanks for the presentation this evening. Uh, as I reviewed this packet and went through this particular item, I had a number of questions, some of which you may not be able to answer, so if you can't and you need to phone a friend, that's just fine. Thinking back to when the Bothe's first came before the city council to sell their property, and, uh, what that process looked like, and, and some of the concerns that were raised at that time, uh, a few things that I read here, um, take me back to some of the concerns that we talked about back then, one of which was, uh, traffic volumes and, and traffic flow. So in reading the packet, uh, there was a little bit of information about how that might work, but I'm just curious if there was any sort of traffic study that was done that would provide any estimates relative to the increase in traffic volume that this might create?
The, I don't recall with the initial phasing of the property if they did a traffic study. I know for this particular phase, there was not one completed, although it was discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, actually, the multifamily attached type unit products have a lower traffic generation than the single-family, which is nine point five seven average daily trips. So there will be the normal background growth from the single-family neighborhood, but going back to the east ravine master plan, all the roads that were planned and designed were based on those traffic volumes that were projected and are actually carried forward with subsequent comp plan amendments.
Safe to say then, we're comfortable that the current infrastructure will be able to, and the proposed infrastructure will be able to handle the traffic?
I would let the public works director answer differently, but yes.
Okay. On that same note, uh, so before we let Ryan get up, because I can see him kind of getting itchy, um, road width, uh, there's some information in here about parking on both sides of the street. Now, the fire lane has already been proposed, and I'm sure that that was, uh, as you said, uh, sort of a, um, compromise that came out of the technical review committee, but, uh, do we feel as though allowing parking on both sides of the street, uh, in this particular situation could potentially cause issues down the line with, you know, snowplows and, and other larger vehicles that the city might need to employ for emergency access, anything to that regard, or has that sort of been alleviated with the conversation and technical review?
Well, given that we have two different housing products that are proposed, the single-family portion would follow standard parking, uh, on both sides of the road. The parking on the private streets, there's proposed to be on one side of the street.
Understood. Yep, I saw that. That, that wasn't necessarily my concern, more so the, the two sides of the street. Uh, because of course, as we continue to develop and grow and road widths continue to get narrower, but it seems like the vehicles we purchase get bigger, um, you know, sometimes that, that, uh, that additional space that we give up when we allow parking on both sides of the street can make it pretty tight. So I don't know, Ryan, did you have anything to add on that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, uh, just to go back to the traffic question, I think, I think John answered that. Well, going back to the fact that the east ravine A U A R is really where we have our traffic study, um, and the, and handling the traffic that this will generate, ravine parkways, uh, well-designed to handle that and carry the traffic out to both Hinton Avenue and Jamaica Avenue, our county arterial roadways. Uh, regards to road width, so twenty-eight feet is the city's standard road width. We do not have, uh, a restriction, a permanent restriction on parking right now. Um, we did implement last year, um, this kind of a, a pilot, um, a one-sided parking for construction vehicles. It was not a true parking restriction that we can ticket. Um, it's more of an advisory sign that we work with our developers, um, to, to adhere to. Um, I think that's had some improvement. Um, it's something that we continue to work on, because really during construction is when you have the most, um, traffic and issues in there. Um, and that's the time when we see it, you know, after construction's done, there's very little parking on the roadways. A lot of, uh, HOAs don't sometimes allow it overnight and certain things. So, um, it's really during construction, and we're trying to do that, um, that advisory and working with the developers, uh, to have that one-sided parking for construction.
Okay, thank you. And since you're there, my last question had to do with the lift station. Uh, the temporary lift station that's being proposed, uh, obviously developer will fund the implementation and operation and removal. When is there a proposed date to put in a permanent lift station?
Yeah, Councilmember Olson, so dates are always tough to, tough to, tough to put a, a number to. What this needs to follow is ravine parkway sewer. So right now, that's down Jamaica Avenue, right at, right at ravine parkway, and that will flow up through the Walters Door property and the Kemp property, uh, and that's really the gravity outlet for this neighborhood. So we, we have planned for that, and we would convert it to that when that happens. Uh, you know, the Walters Door property continues to have a lot of interest in development. Um, the Kemp, we haven't really heard a lot about, um, but certainly as it develops on both sides, you know, these properties are very prime for development. So, um, you know, we, we would hope as the city continues to grow and grow quickly, that it would be, um, you know, more in the matter of the upcoming years, two to five years, but, um, it's really hard to put an exact date to it, because it's really development-driven.
Okay, but from a, uh, operational perspective, we're comfortable that the temporary lift station is going to be adequate and, uh, it, it will serve the purpose that it's intended to serve without any sort of future hardship?
Yep, uh, that's correct. So we did look at the, the pipe that this will be running to, since we're kind of running in a different direction. Uh, we did take a look at that with our model. There's plenty of capacity to handle, uh, this entire development if it does build out before the gravity outlet's ready. Um, and also, we'll be working very closely with, uh, utility department. They will be the ones who have to manage it. Um, you know, what type of equipment's in there? Is it equipment that we're accustomed to? We do have one other lift station in town. I want to make sure it's as easy to operate, um, in the long term for our utility department, so.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, yes, Councilmember Mills.
Yeah, just one question of clarification. Actually, you can go back to where you had it there. On that, uh, fire access, you mentioned a private road, and I might have missed it in the packet. How, how are they accessing there? And I guess my concern is, are people gonna try to drive through there? If you can clarify that.
Well, the fire access lane would be off of the private drive that connects to the ravine parkway, and the trailway access would tie into Inwood Avenue.
Okay, so it would be a trail that, that they would access to get there?
Could have an advanced subbase for handling fire trucks as a part of the developers' agreement. It's gonna talk about the HOA maintaining that access during the winter. So, yeah, we have a couple others in town that have served this community well.
Yes, I had known that. I just, I heard the private drive, and I thought, oh-oh, are we gonna have people trying to go on a private drive?
But drive for the development.
So, thank you for the clarification on that. I appreciate that, John. That's it.
Okay. I, any other questions at the moment? I, I did have a couple, John, just for clarity. So, just so I'm, as you were going through it, and you're on the right one at the moment in front here. So where that, that star is, that is the fire access, that is currently Inwood. Is that correct?
That is Inwood Avenue, correct.
Okay. So that portion of Inwood, and then I'm assuming, once you get beyond the ravine parkway, the rest of Inwood that goes to the Woodbury border, is that being discontinued?
Not as a part of this project. It would, it would continue as a rural design roadway until such time that area develops, and it would be incorporated like Ideal Avenue was with the first additions and with the, with the, uh, pinecliff additions.
Okay, and the reason I was asking is because on this picture, it shows, um, obviously the circle with the X through it, and I was curious if that meant that that Inwood was going away?
It, it will remain until such time there's development in that area.
But then eventually, Inwood goes away?
It will be rerouted.
On that portion anyway?
It would be rerouted, yes.
Okay. And then if you could go back to the other, the one where the, the houses are gonna have their backyard, I think it's the slide right before this. Oh, maybe not. Yeah, there you go. So, I don't know that I've ever seen, I, I mean, this is kind of an interesting one, because I don't know I've ever seen where we've actually given property, um, to existing homeowners, uh, that, uh, abut a, a situation like this. So, and, and I'm, I'm not against it. My question though is, um, how does that happen? And I don't know who wants to answer this, because what if some of them want it, some of them don't? Because my assumption is, um, as they gain some acreage, which personally would be cool, um, or a foot or whatever, um, or feet, the fact is, is it's probably gonna have an effect on their taxable market value. Um, so I guess, you wanna share what?
Certainly, your honor, members of the council. So the, first of all, we have to do title work to see how the city actually owns, whether it's right-of-way and fee, uh, in which the city would convey it to those property owners and have that conversation, or whether it's dedicated right-of-way in a plat. If it is dedicated right-of-way, then the city would vacate that right-of-way, and that's done, uh, by a resolution of the council, but it is a hearing, uh, and it would have to be a public hearing, so the property owners adjacent to that would be given notice. But by law then, if the city council passes that resolution, then it automatically, uh, becomes part of the property that it's adjacent to. So if it is, um, if it is, uh, adjacent to two, you know, different kinds of property, then it would split in half. Uh, so typically, if it's a sixty-six-foot roadway, thirty-three feet go to one side and thirty-three feet to the other. Uh, but that's, that's by operation of law, that's what happens. Um, so they would just automatically, um, on their property, Dakota County, or Washington County, would, uh, note that that has been vacated, and that that vacated right-of-way then becomes part of their property, and they would assess it appropriately for what, whatever value that, uh, brings to their land.
And I'm not trying to scare the homeowners over there, because if anything, I think that's kind of cool, they're gonna gain some extra land. But I just, I, I, again, I've never seen where you have this many, I guess it'd be sublots, if you will, uh, that would, uh, be in essence given, I say the word given, however we want to talk about it, uh, to each of those landowners, uh, that are abutting that property. So it's kind of an interesting thing I've not seen in all my years as being mayor, so. Okay. All right. All right. So on that, any other questions for our staff at the moment? Okay. The applicant, did you have anything you wanted to state first?
I would just like, since like...
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Oh, I'm not bad.
I was just going to have him see if he had any questions. Then you are absolutely next. No, you're okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Paul Tobon with Lennar. I'm an entitlement manager. Excited to be here to get going on the next half, I guess, of Calarosa. So I want to thank the city for the support, staff for working with us, and John and Ryan for answering questions and kind of getting us to this point. Excuse me. So I don't really have a whole lot to add, just a brief synopsis. Because we are introducing a new, newer housing type, the idea is that we're going to run the gamut now for the entire community. So we're going to have two- and three-car villa, three-car single-family in the form of your typical one-level ramblers, modified splits, traditional two-story homes with walkouts, lookouts, and full basements. Three-plus beds, two-plus baths, starting at about 1,300 square feet on the low end, like for a single story or a modified split. And then if you end up finishing the basement, obviously, the square footage goes up from there. But anywhere from kind of 1,300, starting up to 2,600, 2,800 square feet, so a lot of different ranges. And then just one thing to highlight on the townhomes, they are a basement townhome. The ones on the west side are slab-on-grade, but the ones that we're proposing on the east side would feature a basement. Similar pricing, similar architecture, trying to really pull everything together in a continuous fashion throughout the community. And briefly, the schedule would be getting through preliminary plat, obviously, tonight, and then working with staff to move toward a final plat approval, probably a month or two from now, and then preparing the construction plans and getting ready for a spring 2020 start with grading and bringing what will be Calarosa fifth edition forward. So I'm available for any other questions that you have, but that's kind of the short and sweet of it.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant at the spot? Fantastic, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Now you can, we'll let you come on up. Absolutely.
And, you know, if you want to take it offline, you can.
No, no. This is in the public. All I do need you to do is state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I will do that. My name is Bonnie Madder, and I live at 6649 Inskip Avenue South in Cottage Grove. So I'm just like maybe a few homes to the south, and I'm back up to Shepherd Road, okay, the Shepherd Farm.
Shepherd's Woods, yep.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I'm nervous. I'll try to calm down, but it might take me a while. So anyhow, I've watched this development go up, and they've done a great job. Very happy with it, no problems at all. I have no problems with multifamily housing. I am a little bit concerned, and really, I really didn't have a lot of concerns, because I had the 2040 comprehensive plan, and I did actually read it, you know, I've looked at it, so I was pretty comfortable with what was going in there. And then all of a sudden, I found out that there was, there were all of these townhomes going in, which is fine, but if you could just, I have a couple of questions. If you could just bring up that one slide that showed the townhomes with the other homes? No, not that one, you've got another one. This one, yeah. So if you look at the density of this in relationship to your typical homes that are in that development, it's really a big change. And the area that that's going on, it's a very small area. There's 54 townhomes going in there. I'm not here for me, I'm here because I feel it's unfair what's going to be happening to all of the people that are going to be put into that tight of an area. That's my concern. The other thing that I have a concern about is, can you do this again? Can you just go back to that star? The star, the fire? No, you, that one, right, okay. So it was always my understanding that 65th was going to end at Inwood Avenue. That was all going to be shut down. But now, if I understand things, and maybe it's not the way it is, it's Inwood Avenue is now going to be open all the way to 70th Street. It'll go from Ravine Parkway to 70th Street. And before, I thought it shut down at 65th. But because of the fire issue, because of the number of townhouses that are in there, they need to have this different access. And then my concern is, then other people that live along Inwood Avenue should all be informed, not just me, you know, not just the few people that are 500 feet from that development. So this is a big change from what was in the comprehensive plan. That's kind of where I'm at with it. And that's why I feel I have to say this, because I just feel that there's way too, it's too dense for that area. There's no retail out there, there's no public transportation. It's just, I don't think it's a good fit. I could see those other, the villas and things going in there and maybe put, give the townhomes some additional space. And the other thing is, I don't understand, what's the square footage of those townhouses? Do you know what I mean? Right now, it looks like they're not as big as the, well, I guess those are lots. Then it's even smaller. So those are my concerns, my biggest concerns, and thank you very much. I guess I'd like to know, can the 2040 comprehensive plan, or can the comprehensive plan change at any time without, you know, bringing everybody up to speed on it? That would be a question. The road, that concerns me, and the idea of putting that dense of a group of homes into that one location bothers me. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to drive up there, to look at how many homes you'd have, but it's a lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And they've done a great job. It's beautiful up there.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I don't want it to change, thank you.
John, do you want to speak on the one comment about Inwood?
Well, Inwood Avenue currently exists from 70th Street, again, up to Woodbury, where it turns into Sunny Hill Drive. As a part of this project, it'll be improved from the new Ravine Parkway constructed area to the south, to where 65th Street gets vacated. So it'll just be a continual roadway from 70th up to the Ravine Parkway. And that was discussed, again, in the concept plan. It was discussed as a part of some of the early plannings of the Ravine Parkway. And the, again, the stuff to the north, the vision is that it gets rerouted with any subsequent development. Woodbury, we have an upcoming meeting to further discuss the connections into Woodbury, and from my initial understanding is that they don't want a big thoroughfare connection in there, and so it'll just be a local roadway, most likely.
All right, but just to be, again, I'm just having a little hard time visualizing. So on, where Inwood, you know where Inwood kind of goes around the curve, right? Okay. What, is Inwood stopping right there, or is Inwood going to continue to go north?
Let's see if one of these subdivision...
Thought you had a picture.
Okay, so Inwood Avenue currently comes from 70th Street.
Yep.
You go past the water tower, you got Shepherd Farm on the east, and then the road curves into 65th Street.
That is correct.
Or it continues on to the gravel roadway, Sunny Hill Drive, up in Woodbury. So the portion from here, so from here to here stays the same. From here to here gets reconstructed as a part of this project. And then up here, until such time we get development up there, it's going to continue as the roadway as it currently exists.
So Inwood will continue going north?
Up to Military Road, correct.
Up to Military. The reason I was asking is because what was confusing me is the back access, if you will, that you were talking about for fire apparatus. You were commenting about a vacated road, and I was thinking that that was Inwood.
I was too.
And that's why I'm confused, is, so the road is, Inwood will continue to move?
And be improved, correct.
And be improved.
Actually, to clarify, council, it's only being improved up to 65th Street, or up to Ravine Parkway. So Ravine Parkway goes like this?
Yes.
And then down. This section here is what's being improved with the plat. That's adjacent to the medium density.
Okay.
This portion will actually be vacated within Cottage Grove and rerouted, you know, likely as a local street into a future development of the Kemp property. That's also what would be consistent with Woodbury. It turns into Sunny Hill Drive, and we haven't had the meeting yet, but we've had discussions with Woodbury, and they do not see Sunny Hill as a main corridor. We don't show it as a collector roadway, neither do they. So we want it to be a local roadway with property, you know, fronting it. So this will actually be vacated in the future, and we'll help clarify that timeline with the city of Woodbury, and we can have more details with that, with the actual final plat on timing of that.
Okay, so then, just again, thank you, that helps clarify for me. But the fact then is, where the townhomes currently are being proposed, is there a reason why we wouldn't want the road to dump out to Inwood?
That is something that we looked at with the developer, but we just didn't really see it as a need. We really want traffic to utilize Ravine Parkway. That's a much more kind of built-up road for that traffic. If it was a permanent connection right here, it would encourage more cut-through traffic down Inwood Avenue. Now, to the south of there, it is a two-lane roadway with no, you know, houses fronting it, but it's, you know, in older condition, so we really want to encourage traffic to utilize Ravine Parkway, which will eventually go out to Jamaica Avenue. Now, cars can certainly use that, but we were trying to really have this medium-density traffic focus into that larger collector roadway and not onto Inwood.
No, and I understand we don't want to dump it, per se, to the, into the neighborhoods, but to the south, which they won't, they'd have to go out to the Ravine Parkway and then go down Inwood to 70th.
Correct, yep.
Okay. It just looked weird that we were stubbing, in my opinion, that we were stubbing two roads in a medium-density situation when there's a road right there.
Yep, and actually, when you look at what Lennar proposed, they had actually no access at all, because they also want to have that, you know, really go out to Ravine Parkway. It was an option we discussed to have it actually physically connect, but the other thing that can also result in is some cut-through traffic from this neighborhood. If residents from the single-family portion want to use Inwood, they're more likely to cut through this smaller private street, so we're also trying to avoid that as well. We really want them to use Ravine Parkway and then go down. Opening this up would really kind of invite some of that cut-through traffic.
So I'm assuming then, at the entrance into this kind of cluster of townhomes, there'll be some type of sign that says no through traffic?
Correct, yep. We would place a no-outlet sign. I'm kind of consistent with our sign policy, so.
Okay. All right, and I'm trying to think the other question. You were concerned about the traffic, but you were concerned about the density?
Density, yeah. The square footage, you know, of the townhomes, and 54 times whatever that square footage is, you know, what?
And actually, I did calculate, added up all those outlots and what's kind of the true growth density of that area. It's a 6.9 units per acre. So when you look at, you know, typical medium-density products between four and 10 units per acre, so this is actually very consistent with a typical medium-density area, and even a little bit on the low end, you know, seven would be kind of right in the middle. So you're actually a little bit below kind of an average medium-density product, so fairly consistent from a density standpoint for other developments in the city.
Yeah, and I do know one of the, oh, and then I think the other question she had was about, and I think you mentioned it, but what's the square footage of these? You were saying they're going to have basements. I did remember you saying that. Yeah, I know she had a question about the square footage.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the square footage ranges from, I believe, 1,600 to 1,800 square feet. It's a 25 by 75-foot sleeve.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thank you. So is 65th going to stop at Inwood Avenue, or is Inwood Avenue still going to be a street between 65th and 70th? That's what the question is.
And Councilmember, it will be a street from Ravine Parkway down.
Going to be?
Yep.
Now it will be open?
Yep, yep, and it's...
That was not part of the original plan.
And actually, I did go back to the 2014 concept plan, and what we're proposing today is consistent with that. We had discussions with Woodbury back then. It did indicate, yep, it did indicate keeping this portion open like we are next to the medium-density and improving it. That was a discussion back then, and then vacating to the north. So that was part of that 2014 concept planning process.
I mean, I do understand there is going to be more traffic, just in general, because there's development happening up there. Matter of fact, I think our county...
I don't believe you. I understand that, I understand that, but there's a big difference if you're talking 54 units in that very compressed place coming out of there on Inwood Avenue, which today is...
They probably won't. Probably go where you...
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm just...
No, no, I appreciate you bringing up the comment, because we want to make sure we inform the public.
Yes.
What I do, what I do think will probably happen, if you think about where, at the moment, kind of where the developments are, and when I was talking about, you made the comment about commercial, the likelihood at the moment, the likelihood would be that they're not going to go out the ravine and then down Inwood. They're probably going to go Ravine Parkway west to Hinton.
Or Jamaica.
Or, well, eventually to Jamaica, but because there isn't going to be any real commercial going the direction that you're talking, I mean, that's, you kind of made a comment earlier at a different situation about the, we'll have to see what the history or what happens at that point. But I do think the majority of this traffic's going to probably go west, down towards Hinton, because it would be weird to kind of go up and around and then cut, because once you go to Inwood, and then say Inwood to 70th Street, the fact of the matter is, you're then either, one, you're going east towards, you know, Cedarhurst or the commercial district out where you have a business, or you're going to go west, which eventually gets you down to wherever, or Woodbury, you know, eventually, so.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. Commissioner, did you have a question?
[inaudible]
Yeah.
I'm here as a resident right now, I think. Do I have to give my address again?
Yes, you should, just to be official.
7862 62nd Street, south in Cottage Grove, and I happen to live up in the Calarosa. And my concern is, is we recently just lived through a controversy with the change to, from villas to townhomes up in my community, which the townhomes have not started yet being built yet, so we don't know what they're look like yet. My concern is, the result of that, how that happened was, the zoning was changed to what the zoning is looking at changing here. And my understanding was, once that zoning permission was changed, the city lost control as far as what could be put in there, as opposed to what was originally promised in the original plating, in the actual drawing, and it was changed. So my concern is, the, and it's business is business, I understand that, but what you're being shown here now, once you give the all-clear, because it's changed to the, with the PUD, that it doesn't have to stay with this many townhomes, it might end up being this many townhomes, and there might be changes done in there. And that's, I would just like to prevent from what happened, the surprise what happened before up in my community, it happens again in about a year, or whenever these get up there. So that's my concern of changing it to, how do we know that it doesn't become all townhomes in there instead of single-family homes and some townhomes? And because that's what's decided at that time, which will totally change the whole look of the neighborhood again, the discussion of cars coming through there and stuff like that. So that's this, I just had a little bit of deja vu when I saw this coming up, and the first that I saw it was when I was going through the notes tonight, or the packet for tonight's thing. So that was my big concern. And as far as the commercial traffic, I am a little concerned about that, because we had a lot of dump trucks and heavy equipment and heavy product come right through our neighborhood, and through the neighborhood to get over down to, as they came through, and then they right to Hinton. So I could see a lot of that coming through the neighborhoods again and tearing up roads, and we, because we've lived... So I could see a lot of that coming through the neighborhoods again and tearing up roads and we, because we've lived through it. And we're wondering if it's because they want to come down there to get over to Hinton as soon as possible and then to on to the freeway or 61 is where all the trucks are coming. So I just want to, you know, make sure, you know, everybody's aware of where we think it should go because of logic. It doesn't end up being that way. So and it does, it does cause a lot of havoc with the roads, especially in the communities. So.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ryan, I'll maybe ask you of this. I mean, you don't even have to go out, I don't think. And I, and I, because I know where you live, is there a way, and I'm assuming with the developer here too, is there a way to make sure that truck traffic does not go through the existing neighborhoods? And they use the the more arterial roads, if you will, or the ones that are not going to tear up the inner?
And actually, just one thing I'll mention very quickly, Mayor. One unfortunate timing we had to work through was Ravine Parkway was under construction.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So timing wise, I think there was probably some challenges with with access into the development. With Ravine Parkway being open, we'll definitely want to encourage traffic to use Ravine Parkway. And that's something we can work with Lennar on and our inspectors to help making sure that's happened. Because it is correct, we really, we don't want truck traffic going through our existing neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, I can speak for, I guess, myself, I could, as the council can. Your other question or concern as it relates to the density question, if you will. It's kind of interesting because there's these different, it's almost kind of like the situation that happened up with the these, the Passavod property up by Old and Middle School. There's these little nodes, if you will, that probably don't make a lot of sense to actually just do single family. And that's part of the reason why the discussion was to go with more of a medium density up in that particular area. And when you kind of look at what, this is kind of its own little pod, and I do know and understand that there's single family to the south and there's going to be single family to the north too, though there is going to be quite a bit of outlots there and then some buffering. But, you know, our, we do have a lot of areas within our community where we have townhomes intermixed with with single family. So and it seems to work. My mom lives one, near one off of Indian, literally, right behind her or beside her is the is the townhomes. And because I don't, and I know, again, we'll see history, but I don't see the the overall issue as it relates to how they're maintaining their properties, if anything, because of the the homeowner associations and stuff. They actually maintain them very, very well, that I've seen. And so I just wanted to mention that is one of the challenges. And to the, you know, today they're here with this, you know, next spring, do they come back and say, we're selling so many? Or next fall, we want to expand to the north? I would tell you, my gut would be no, and I say that for me, I can't speak for the rest of the council. Because if you take, take a look again at some of these these nodes, if you will, there's, it makes sense on where some of these things are going and they get sprinkled into the neighborhoods. So you have a bit of medium density next to single, single family. I mean, we have other parts of our community right now that are going to have high density next to rural residential, not the Passavod property, but we've had some other properties that are looking at at selling. There's going to be a higher density. So that's just my two cents, and I think Councilmember Mills, he had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, I'm, I live in a townhome. So I will, no, what I will share is my townhome is actually slightly smaller than the ones that are being proposed. I know on pictures and things, it looks like it's really tight. I think that people will find that that it's it's a nice community to live in, and people that go there like that type of style and everything. So I just wanted to express, you know, having, that I live in that type of community, that those, they're probably not as tight as maybe it kind of looks on the picture or taking a look at little boxes on a map. I know sometimes that can be hard to visualize what that's going to look like. I think they look really spectacular and especially them having basements are fantastic. So just wanted to express that, and thank you so much for coming out and sharing your concerns.
Thank you for your patience and thank you for responding.
Oh, absolutely. That's that's our goal. Yep, you're welcome. Counsel, any other requests or anything from staff? All right, seeing none, if you noticed, we have two specific motions that need to be made on this proposal. Who would like to do number one?
I would move that we pass ordinance 1015 approving a zoning amendment to change the zoning of 58.56 acres of land generally located north of 65th Street, west of Inwood Avenue, and south of the Woodbury border from AG1 Agricultural Preservation to R3 Single Family Residential with a PUD planned unit development.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And then we have item number two.
Mayor, I'll move that we adopt resolution 2019-128 approving the preliminary plat to be called Calarosa East, which would create a residential subdivision consisting of 121 detached single family homes, 54 townhome units and 13 outlots.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
I just wanted to say real quick that I appreciate the work that Paul has done with us here. His company's been very good to work with and been a good partner. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next under regular agenda is B, which is the personnel policy update. And our HR Director, Joe Fishbach, will take us through this one.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the personnel policy update to you. The personnel policy hasn't been comprehensively reviewed in more than 20 years. Whoops, sorry about that. So staff, specifically myself, Jennifer Levitt and Robin Roland have been working with two attorneys from Cory's office to look at all aspects of the personnel policy. And I think we probably met four or five times and came up with a draft. And what we did is sent that draft out to all employees for their review and feedback. Most of them were minor things, typos, things of that nature, nothing of real substance that they wanted changed. Next, I'll go over the highlights. Previously, what we had is six months into employment, you weren't allowed to use annual leave for anything other than illness. We're getting rid of that, so no waiting period for annual leave. We realized that some people come from different cities, other organizations that have families, vacations planned, things of that nature, and they need to use annual leave for paytime off. We added bereavement leave that would allow employees up to three shifts to be on leave for the bereavement of a loved one. Eight hours of voluntary leave per year. We see this as a team building opportunity. One such example is Habitat for Humanity here in Cottage Grove. We had a number of employees do that this last year, and it was a positive experience for everybody that did that. Additionally, we put in there clearly defined examples of behaviors that could lead to discipline. A lot of them are self explanatory, but we wanted to make sure all the expectations were set for employees so they know where to start from. We updated the offensive behavior policy. Some of the offensive behavior policy definitions have been expanded based on state and federal law. And frankly, ours was a little light in that area, so we beefed that up a little bit. We also updated the FMLA policy. We did have a certain criteria in there where married employees couldn't use FMLA. We don't have any married employees that are using that, but we thought it would, as a fairness issue, we wanted to fix that. So it is consistent for all employees, whether they're married to somebody else with the city or not. And we also updated the social media, social media policy based on best practices. And a lot of it follows the model League of Minnesota Cities Policy. We did update the per diem rates in the travel training policy to reflect the federal GSA rates. So these are actually based on what area of the country that you're doing the travel or training in. And we also allow the city administrator to approve job relevant certification programs, namely things that might happen at night that would be job relevant, such as the Public Works Certificate that some of our Public Works employees may be interested in attending. So based on what we've done with city staff, our recommendation would be approve the updated version of the personnel policy, but we would stand for any questions that council may have.
All right, sounds good. And first of all, Joe, I know you guys have worked real hard over the last, I think, year, kind of updating and enhancing the the personnel policies for the, all of the employees of the city of Cottage Grove. Council, do you have some questions? Okay, Councilmember Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Not not so much a question, but but I also want to echo the sentiments of the mayor from a structural perspective. We needed to have this upgrade done, and I feel really in going through it, and it's well over 100 pages. And I've I've been through it about one and a half times. And, you know, it was well thought out and and you guys did a really good job at it. There are, however, a couple sections in here that I think the council should have an opportunity to to weigh in on, and and not just simply from the perspective of putting a stamp on this here at the end. But kind of, kind of have a little bit of time to do as a team what our staff did. And staff was given about two weeks for anybody on the staff team to to come out with ideas or thoughts or concerns and what have you. We really didn't get that chance. And so what I would like to see is for us to have that opportunity. And so what what I'm going to be seeking tonight, Mayor, is for us to table the approval of this tonight with a very quick turnaround time, that we could bring this, you know, Jennifer, was it the 4th of December? Okay, because I know we want to get this wrapped up before the end of the year. But what this would do is this would give us an opportunity, especially since we are being involved in in at least one of those areas, to have a chance to weigh in on how that effect would, you know, happen for us. So the two, the two areas, and and just to be specific, so staff knows, Section 31, which is the respectful workplace policy, and that's the one where the council is, is actually drawn into that one. If, in reading through the introduction piece of this, it did state that there were certain groups that didn't apply to most of the policy. And council and commission members and, you know, outside contractors, things like that. So since we are drawn into this one here, we should have a say in what we, you know, in what we do. And then the second one is to go a little bit more in depth into the social media policy. There really are three key levels that I would like to see that that we match up to. Number one is we've got, you know, a full legal position because obviously we don't want to have liabilities, right? Second to that, I very much value human resource position. And so not just looking at a government entity, but maybe looking a little bit at private sector too, to see what what is out there and how organizations, whether they're for profit, nonprofit, government, private sector, whatever, how organizations are dealing with this. And then last but not least is to really put it to an ethical stance, to make sure that we feel good about the policy that we come up with so that we can all feel proud of that and and all have had our signature on it to know that we've got something really good. So it's not just about looking at what we have that affects us here now, but it's also about thinking about the future and future councils, future members of our staff, maybe a future attorney, right? So we want to, we want to put something together here that hopefully will stand a test of time, at least for a while, until certain things change, but have it really be a good, solid program that we can all feel really good about. So I, that's where I'm at, Mayor, and whatever other dialogue the rest of the members have to do, and then I would make a motion.
Okay, sounds good. I do see Councilmember Olson.
Joe, thank you very much for taking the time to put this together and present this evening. I also have gone through this with with a very critical eye. Being, you know, a retail multi-unit supervisor, I get to deal with personnel policies probably far more than I would like to. And I I think the mayor might echo that sentiment because we deal with people stuff consistently. I mean, it is just a regular occurrence. I I had multiple things that I dealt with today, in fact, that always go back to personnel policy. And I would echo Councilmember Dennis's sentiment that, while this is a very detailed and thoroughly researched and well put together document, it would be nice if the council had an opportunity to review, perhaps ask some questions of our attorney or the attorneys involved in this, you know, this policy in addition to yourself and the city administrator, so that we could better understand some of the verbiage and perhaps where that might lead us, because I don't think any of us here have a law degree. So, you know, it would be nice to be able to get that that firsthand information. And specifically, as I read through the policy, in addition to some of the things that Councilmember Dennis pointed out, I wanted to have an opportunity to talk further with you and with our attorneys and and with other city staff about some of the positions in the city where we have city employees who use their phones for business purposes in addition to the fact that these are personal devices. And in some cases, we have employees who work for the city whose phones can be confiscated based on the work that they do because they may be, you know, necessary to to provide evidence in a case or, you know, some other related activity. And how does that tie back to this policy and what do we do in terms of compensation? Or do we need to provide a quote unquote company phone, that kind of thing? So I I would second the, you know, motion that I think.
He didn't actually make one yet, but.
That Councilmember Dennis is prepared to make. It would be nice to table this for for now and have some further dialogue.
Okay. Any other questions by council at this moment? So then, if you want to go and make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make motion that we table the approval of this process until the December 4th meeting and that we have a workshop to address both Section 31 and this, which is the social media policy and also the the other piece that I had mentioned. One caveat I would like to add on to that, I find a lot of value in working with Chad Weinstein from Ethical Leaders in Action. And since he is helping us with strategic planning and with some of the other initiatives that we've had, I would just at the very least like for him to provide a weigh in on his perspective when it comes to both the respectful workplace and social media policy. If he could just, and we don't have to go into a big in-depth thing with him, but if he can see those, review and make his recommendation to cover the ethical stance piece of that, I would, I would like to see that happen. That's my motion.
Okay, so I do have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor of this one, because there is a motion to table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. We'll bring it back and do a workshop. All right, our last item on regular agenda is C, which is the 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. And I believe we have two. Robin Roland is going to start us off on this one, and then Ryan's going to take over.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome back, Mr. Olson. Thank you for joining us again.
It's great to be here. Thank you.
It's good to have you. We'll try and be as quick as possible with the 2020 to 2024 CIP. As you are all aware, this document is a five-year planning document. It identifies those capital projects which the city assumes, or I should say, anticipates occurring in over the next five years. This document includes pavement management, park development, improvement projects, municipal facility projects and road projects related from commercial and residential development. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on October 28th. A copy of the meeting minutes were in the packet, and it passed unanimously in front of the Planning Commission. And the reason that it goes to the Planning Commission is because. And the reason that it goes to the Planning Commission is because it's considered a part of the annual, or the 2030, and then subsequently, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and it has to be ident, or it has to be added as a component of that Comprehensive Plan, which is why it goes for a public hearing and then comes back to you for final approval. As we have done for the last several years, we've identified the first two years of the CIP as a work plan. And all that means is this is, these are the projects that we anticipate happening, but for anything else coming in front of the council or any changes that might happen, as we all know that they do. During the course of these two years, there's about four, I'm sorry, during the course of 2020, which is the first year of that work plan, we anticipate approximately $14.9 million worth of projects, which I'll go through with Ryan here in a minute. The work plan is, we anticipate these projects will happen, however, the council will see these again before they come to feasibility studies or anything further along the line. So, approving the CIP is approving the plan, it isn't approving individual projects, because as I said, those could change for any number of different circumstances. So, without further ado, the public facilities that are identified in the CIP, in 2021, we have the opportunity possibly for some commercial development to happen, which could impact the compost site, and if it does, we would need to look for a different site and acquire land for the compost. 2022, we're anticipating possibly redoing the golf course parking lot in one or two phases, depending upon if we can get that done, and if there's no further deterioration of that parking lot. And then, 2024, which is about five years out, we anticipate looking at a further solution to a public works or parks facility. If that comes to fruition, we might need to look for land at that point. Parks and improvements, the caveat to this is, these projects are done assuming that there is funding for them in either the trust fund or the improvement fund, or they are driven by development. For example, in 2020, we identify Michael's Point Park. That happens only if the development happens at Michael's Point. If it doesn't, it gets pushed off into the future until future development. Hamlet Park, we're working on the ball fields at Hamlet Park. That's a pretty stiff price tag at $1.7 million. Again, supported by trust fund or park trust fund funds. If not, the project may be scaled back or go from a two-year project to a three-year project. We are also looking at an additional shade structure at Woodridge Park, the bike park pump track paving.
Figure that first.
Yeah. And then, Oakwood Park, parking lot improvements, as well as some of the park improvements beginning in 2020, subsequent to the sale of the land, which just occurred last month, of the Oakwood Lot, which will fund the improvements to that park. In 2021, again, the Hamlet Park expansion and revamping, the Swanland Park, which would occur only if development drives it, replacement of the Oakwood Park Shelter, Arbor Meadows Park improvements, which would go along with the pavement management project in 2021, replacement of the Highlands Basketball Court, and fencing replacement at the Lamar Park and Common Area. 2022, Glacial Valley Park, this is formerly known as the Ravine Parkway Park, I think, and this again is a development-driven park, and subs- subsequent, it only will happen if there are enough funds available for the project. Again, the Lamar Park Shade Shelter replacement, and then in 2023, Hamlet Park, Harse Side Park, and Woodridge Trail. I'm going to let Ryan take the roadway projects. He's going to talk about how we're going to get a couple of these projects done over the next couple of years.
Thanks, Robin. First on the list is the West Point Douglas Road Project. Council's familiar with what happened to the roadway this past spring. It really fell apart on us. It is over 40 years old, so we were kind of getting by with that roadway. We'll get by for one more spring, and then next year, we will reconstruct the roadway. We're just going to replace that pavement at this time. We did look at multiple options on, you know, just the mill and overlay, which we concluded was really not feasible, although to a total reconstruct, which was over $6 million, and not something we really had the funds for at this time. So, we'll have a full replacement of that pavement, so we'll have a new, good driving surface for the traveling public down there. Also looking to add the sidewalks along the roadway that are missing. A portion of that will be filled in with the proposed Cap Industries project, and there's a few that have been developed and not completed, and we'll look to complete that with the project, and that would be assessed back to those property owners as part of that 429 assessment project. Also, the 80th Street Reconstruction from Keats Avenue, Jamaica Avenue, this roadway is also in very poor condition. As we did our initial analysis of it, we found the problems of the roadway went all the way down to the subgrade, so we're really starting from scratch with a total reconstruct of this roadway, about $6.5 million in total project cost. This is largely funded through our municipal state aid funds from MINDOT. It would be an assessment project per our policy. There's only a handful of homes and then a church with direct access that would be assessed per our policy, and we'll, you know, follow a typical process for that. It does require closure of the roadway due to the level of impact, but because of the, on the north side, the Jenner Avenue-Johnson Avenue development only has access to 80th Street, we're going to split it in half at this proposed phasing line and complete it half at a time, so we can maintain access to that development. We will be looking at adding the trail to the south side of the roadway, looking at improving, there's that crossing right now with an older flashing system, bringing that into more of a current standard system as well with this project. We've got the Ravine Parkway in the both the east, the Calarosa East that we just discussed. This is development-driven. We have development that's occurring, so we're planning for this in 2020 at $1.4 million. A portion of that is paid through an assessment that is outstanding on that property, as it is a benefit to that property, but being a larger collector roadway, a portion of that's paid for by the city, and this would be completed in conjunction with the development. In 2021, we want to get back into our pavement management cycle. We've taken a few years off with some other priorities the past years. $5.7 million project, kind of get back into that five to six miles of roadway reconstruct each year. You can see these two areas, one on the left down by Armstrong and Hillside Elementary, and then on the right, just across the road, south of 85th Street. We also have a handful of smaller areas that have been pushed off over the years. We've got a few more adjacent to 80th Street that we look to include in this project, and then also some smaller roadways that have been kind of remnants of some other projects that haven't been completed up along 70th Street, both near Hinton Avenue and Jamaica Avenue, that we're recommending completing at that time. Also have Ravine Parkway and Cottage View, so this is in conjunction with the Community Center, which will have the referendum vote next year in conjunction with the Community Center project. We'd have the construction of the needed roadways and trunk utilities highlighted in that blue area, and also the turn lane out to Keats Avenue that will be constructed, about $5.5 million. We also have the Ravine Parkway on the Woltersdorf property, once again, development-driven. Right now, we're slating it in 2021, a very similar-sized piece of roadway to the Calarosa East, so $1.4 million, and once again, it's partially paid for through the development itself. I think finally, last project for 2021 is the Harkness Avenue Reconstruction, $3.1 million, also development-driven. We have some interest, of course, from multifamily up in that area. We would look to, you know, plan for this and have that funding in place as it develops, but we know we need a larger portion of that area to develop before we actually reconstruct that roadway. And for 2022 roadway projects, another pavement management project down on Kingsborough Trail, and then also down on East Point Douglas Road along Menards, and up to, just short of the intersections I'll talk about and on the next slide. And then, we have the total estimated project cost of $5.9 million. Also, one other piece up by 90th Street that would be completed as well. And one other area of 2022 pavement management, this would be just south of 70th Street, just around the, just south of the high school. Also have 100th Street improvements slated for 2022, once again, development-driven. It's that remaining piece of 100th Street from Ideal Avenue up to Hemmingway Avenue that would be reconstructed. If we have development that really fills out that area north of 100th Street, we have part of that happening with renewal by Anderson right now, and also some potential development on the south side of 100th Street that we look at more, greater improvements to that roadway, maybe carrying that three-lane section through is what we're looking at with this cost. There will be some interim improvements, you'll see next spring, that renewal by Anderson will be completing. A portion of this roadway, they directly, about, have access to, it's in very poor condition, they're going to replace that pavement just to get us by for the couple of years until we have a larger improvement project. For 2023, 2024, we have, in 2023, the 80th Street Reconstruction for that last remaining piece from Highway 61 to Ideal Avenue, just over $5 million. This is just a pavement replacement and spot curb replacement being shown. We did evaluate a concrete alternative. That adds about $3 million, because you would have to do a full curb replacement as well. So, if we did go with that route, it'd be just over $8 million. Also showing improvements to Century Avenue, this would be 65th Street north the city limits with Woodbury, adjacent to Newport. That would occur in conjunction with some development, which is, you know, pending. There is some interest on that parcel right now, we're showing improvement to that roadway. But we also have some other options we're looking at potentially, you know, incorporating this roadway into the development. So, right now, we're looking at improvement to 2023, but we'll continue to evaluate that as development occurs. In 2024, we have East Point Douglas and Jamaica Avenue intersection improvements. This is our large intersection improvement project that we have evaluated, and this is kind of that, the big plan to fix a lot of those issues down by Target and Jamaica Avenue. It is very expensive, at $8 million, and these properties have been assessed in the past. We'd likely not assess them for a third time for another project in that area. It does require a large amount of right-of-way acquisition and working with those businesses. So, it is something that we continue to get by as we make adjustments to those signals, but this is that larger improvement project. We also show Jamaica Avenue reconstruction from 70th Street to Military Road, just over $4 million. The city cost would be $3 million of that project that we'd work with the county on. Another pavement management project of about $2.8 million, and finally, that project, Casas 19 Overpass, just down the road that we keep in there from a funding standpoint. If we were to have a grant application for some federal funds, we need to show that on our CIP. Finally, utility CIP projects, we have our annual $100,000 in stormwater maintenance that we do each year. For the water fund, we have well maintenance, we poll and maintain one well each year at $70,000. Business Park Water, the design portion, Water Tower, $600,000 in 2020, and then booster pumps in the Calarosa neighborhood. We have some items we're working up in Calarosa on the north end, they have lower pressure, so we've been reviewing some options to improve the pressure in that area. And then, the Business Park Water Tower in 2021, construction of $2.4 million. That's also development-driven, that water tower is really driven by a large water user, if we have one in the Business Park. For the sanitary sewer fund, we have $50,000 in annual maintenance, and also, in 2020, we're looking at lining a trunk sewer from Jamaica Avenue and East Point Douglas Road down through the Dog Park. And finally, we have our streetlight improvements of $100,000 that we complete annually. And that's all we have for you tonight. Take any questions the council may have.
All right, council, any questions on the CIP? I know we've been reviewing this, except for maybe Councilmember Olson, who was in the meeting, though, so that worked out pretty good. So, I don't think, good job, the two of you going through it and sharing with us. So, what we're looking for is a motion, council.
Mayor, I can make the motion for us to adopt Resolution 2019-127, approving an amendment to the city's 2030 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, otherwise known as CIP.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is Q, which is council commissary request. I'll do my normal and start down with Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to say, welcome to Justin Olson as one of our new colleagues up here. I look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you.
All right, that was quick and easy.
Yep.
There you go.
There you go.
Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to welcome Justin back to the panel. We're expecting big things out of you, so-
Thank you.
Be ready to go. Also, Mayor, I would like to mention, because we're now just a few days away, this coming Sunday, which is the 24th of November, I'm involved with a whole bunch of really great people down at Cub Foods to bag some groceries, to raise money for ultimately, the Friends in Need Food Shelf. So, this is one of the multitudes of events that are going on from the Holiday Train Group, and so, some of the stakeholders that we've invited to come in and contribute their time and energy include members of the Lions Club, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group of Cottage Grove and surrounding areas, Planning Commission members, Chamber of Commerce, our county commissioner, our state senator Carla Bigum, Tony Jurgens from the House of Representatives, we've got some city staff, and of course, your city council. So, we're all going to be there working hard, trying to raise some money for a very, very good cause, because as we all know, hunger is not a good thing to have. So, we want to do our part to make a difference, especially at holiday time. So, we're going to be there from 9:00 in the morning all the way until 5:00 PM, and come on down, if you need groceries, come to Cub, let us bag. We promise not to break the eggs, we won't smash the fruit, we'll wrap the meat in plastic, we'll do a really good job for you, so that's what I have. Thank you.
So, are you saying that if I crack some eggs while I'm down there, you're replacing them?
Okay. I'll indemnify you.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Awesome, fantastic. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you very much. Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to mention what an incredible honor and privilege it is to be sitting here this evening as part of this city council. I've had the opportunity in the past to work with many at the table. I've not had the opportunity to work directly with Councilmember Mills, and so that's something that I'm very much looking forward to, but it really is something that I take seriously and value tremendously, and I can't say thank you enough to the voters of the community for having faith and trust in me and allowing me this opportunity. I enjoyed it so much, I think I'm going to do it again next year. So, you know, this is a one-year term, because it was a special election to fill a term that is intended to run from 2016 through the 2020 calendar year. And so, I was elected to serve out the remainder of that term, and then there will be another election for the normal four-year term this coming fall, that if Councilmember Mills decides to run again, and if I should decide to run again, we would need to be part of. So, just thank you so much to everybody for the opportunity to be here. I also wanted to just take a moment, of course, to thank Senator Bigum for being gracious enough to swear me in this evening. Carla is a dear friend who had a direct impact on my willingness and ability to actually get involved in city government many years ago, and so, having her here this evening was very appropriate and also very much appreciated. I also want to thank, of course, my wife, my family, you know, my mom and dad were here tonight, my wife and kids were gracious enough to allow me this opportunity to be here, so I will give you everything I have, and I will work extremely hard on your behalf. I will be engaged, I will be engaging, and I am committed to the people in this room, the people watching at home, and everybody in this community with all my heart and all my soul, and you can expect that, you can take it to the bank, and I'm looking forward to the next 13 months with this group. I think we can do some really nice things together.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Olson, Councilmember Athiti?
Well, I'd like to welcome Justin back, too. He and I served on the council along with the mayor back in the day. Gosh, I can't even remember how many years ago that was, that four, five, something like that? No, more than that, maybe. Anyway, so, welcome back. And other than that, different things were mentioned. We saw a presentation on how many different events were coming up here till the end of the year, so I shouldn't hear anybody saying they don't have anything to do, and for fun and things like that, and I guess I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, happy holiday, which is next week, right?
I know, it's hard to believe. Good weekend to be bagging groceries at Cub, so. Anything else?
That'll be it.
All right, so a couple of things. And if I don't say welcome, Councilmember Olson, I'll be- it'll be on social media, like the mayor didn't welcome him or something.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Speaking of social media. But obviously, very happy to have you back on the council. And obviously, we've had many years working together on some pretty tough issues back then, but we're sitting in one of those tough issues, which is an amazing building. So pretty excited to have you back on the team. A couple other items of importance that I need to, that are more, I guess, specific. One is, due to the fact that at the previous council meeting, we had a closed session to go over a performance valuation, or I'll call it a check-in with our administrator on October 16th. The idea was I need just to make a few comments about that. And just so the public knows, one of the things when we, I'll say promoted, our administrator, Jennifer Levitt, one of the things that she really asked from us, which was pretty cool, is, you know, typically with administrators, we'll do a yearly review process, which obviously is compensated-driven and all that kind of stuff. What Jennifer asked, though, she wanted us to be, do more frequent check-ins to make sure that we're happy with her performance. And, you know, if she has any questions for us, we have any questions for her, this is the opportunity to do that. I did want to say it was a very easy, I would, and I think I can speak for the council, very easy kind of evaluation or check-in. We believe in the council that Jennifer is doing an excellent job. So we really appreciate having you in the leadership role within the city. We've seen a lot of things happening in a very positive way, and you've been a big help and one of the instrumental parts of making that happen. So I just want to let everybody know that that was the, pretty much the just of the, of the review that we did with Jennifer in October at the city council meeting. So thank you, and keep up the good work. The other item, and it's funny, we were just talking about the events that are coming up. This coming Friday, as was brought up by Molly earlier, there is an event down at Eagles or River Oaks, however you want to categorize it, which is called Friendsgiving. And this is an opportunity, it's the 30th year going, and I've been there now. This will be the 30th year for myself. And it's been, each year is getting bigger and bigger, bigger. And what it is, is from five to six is like a social hour, and then from six on is they serve a Thanksgiving dinner, which is amazing. Our chef down there and them, they're really, really good. So I'm mentioning this publicly, because I think we posted this, just to be careful. Basically, this entire council is going to be there. Well, I shouldn't say basically. This entire council and their spouses or significant other, including a previous council member who sat in your seat, and his wife, are all going to be there at that event. So I just want to mention it. That is a, we did post it as a meeting, though our goal, we are not going to be speaking about city business or anything like that, but we're all going to be in the same room. And we just want to let the public know that we're all going to be down there. And I know they've got a good group showing up. I think we have a, not just here, but I think we've got, I've got two tables set up for a bunch of people. So it's pretty cool. And I encourage, if you haven't signed up, I'm hoping there's still some time. Don't know if there is. I'm kind of looking at Jennifer going, no, no, no. But it is, it is a great event. And if you, for whatever reason, if you can't make it this year, I would encourage you to do it next year, because each year it gets bigger and better all the way through. And then lastly, I'll just mention, as we are heading into the holidays here, you heard earlier, there's a lot of things going on in our community. I do invite all of you to join me at the official Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the next council meeting, which I believe is December 4th. Yep. And Santa and Mrs. Claus will be here. There'll be some treats and things in City Hall. It's always a great event, whether it's cold or not. You can be inside. You can come outside. And quick, I encourage all the kids to join us, too. I know our choir and band is here from Park High School, which they're always good sports in doing that with us. But I always like the kids to come out there and help flip the big switch. Less than the public works team have got the tree all set up and ready to go, and we'll have a big switch to go 3-2-1 countdown, and we'll do it. And the tree got a little bit bigger after last year, so, which is pretty cool. So I encourage everybody to come out and join us, and let's have a great time and truly kick off the holiday season. And I should also mention, I did see they were putting up all the holiday decorations down 80th Street and East Point Douglas net today, too. So that's pretty cool. So that'll be lit pretty soon.
Can be a band there, right?
The band will be there.
And probably do some singing.
All right, Dave will be doing some singing. So I just wanted to mention that.
I miss that terribly.
Yeah, exactly. I bet you did. All right. So that's it for Council Commissar's request. Next on the agenda is a workshop session, which is open to the public. We will be taking it in the conference room. And this, the workshop this evening is regarding Public Safety Squad and Body Cameras. And so if you're interested, anybody in the audience wants to come hear about that and what we're talking about, is welcome to do so. 14 is a workshop session closed to the public. There isn't any this evening. So we're not going to adjourn in here, but I did want to say on behalf of myself, and I know the entire council and the city staff, everybody have a great Thanksgiving next week, and we'll see you in December. Thank you.